Good evening, I want to do a 6:30 on our calendar meeting to order. The first item of business is the pleasure of the audience.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now if we could have a moment of silence for our first please. Thank you. Has Rook calling again? Let me start with an interruption please. Chief Will?
Ryan Wolf, I'm chief.
Scott Sutter, chief of police.
Don Gray, DPW director.
Brooke Card, city treasurer.
Nicole Wasenborn, deputy clerk.
Ellen Glass, city manager.
Jerry Lake, city councillor.
Pam Howd, city councillor.
Mike Gilder, city attorney.
Elizabeth Armstrong, mayor.
Brad Dick, mayor of Protown.
Tom Hicks, city councilor.
Brenda Simon, city councillor.
Neat knowledge, city councillor.
We have a special presentation tonight about the mill. It's a mill building update by Jackie Vois of H2A Architects.
Madam Mayor, Jackie Vois of H2A Architects is present this evening to give an update on what she and the team have been working on with the mill. There's been a significant amount of progress. And tonight she's going to be sharing that with us, so Jackie, if you'd like to come on up.
Good evening, thanks for entertaining us tonight with the opportunity to share with you the update.
Jackie, you might have to move that mic down a little bit. You've got to speak directly into it, sorry.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, great. The mill project got kicked off August of this year. And we began our process of restoring and rehabilitation plans for the mill structure. We have a list of tasks to go through for that process to be completed. It begins with documenting the conditions of the mill. That includes looking at old plans of the building, walking through the building, looking at the different components. We did some building scanning with laser scanning, testing. We did some structural analysis. These things are all underway in various stages. There's design and code analysis to be done, a large portion of that is done. Technical drawings for the restoration and rehabilitation. Detailing engineering, we're preparing some measuring so that folks can see what the mill will look like when we're complete. Government approvals, and then getting in construction phases. So you can see the little bar chart there, the percent complete that each of those tasks are, so we'll kind of go through these tabs. We looked at old drawings of the mill and determined whether or not they were accurate enough to reuse. They were not. They were somewhat useful, but we had to do a lot of validation. And that included photography and measuring, which has been done. All the exposed conditions we were able to observe and measure. But the concealed conditions are still underway. Some components have been removed so that we could see beneath them, and others are yet to be tackled. And then we began the historical analysis, did I wing historic photos, as well as conditions on site that tell us about the history of the building. In this case, since the old drawings were not accurate enough for us to use independently, we needed to do what we call building scanning. Those are laser scans of the building with 360-degree photography that's done under certain conditions in which it produces photographs that we can use, that we can actually measure from the photographs. So that's really helpful in validating the existing conditions. So everything that was exposed has been scanned, and the things that are still concealed are yet to be scanned. That'll be coming up in the next steps as we enter February. Testing soil analysis was important for this project. I think you've already been updated on the lean to the building at the basement level. And so this testing analysis helped us to make some determinations and analysis about how to stop that from happening any further and how to make sure that we stabilize the condition. So exterior testing and analysis has been done, internal has been done, and then we're in the process of more recommendations and more consultations. See, there's just kind of a little picture of what the soil boring charts look like after they've taken soil borerings, as well as some of the interior analysis for the concrete job that has taken place. The structural analysis is well underway. Things that have been exposed and could be observed have been put into 3D software models to begin to analyze them. Components that are concealed, we will be getting that in February, be able to observe those and make some final determinations and analysis. There were three exterior borements that were taken so that we could understand the conditions of the earth around the building, and two that were done inside the basement of the building so that we can, again, understand more about the conditions that may have been contributing to the lean in the lower level. The design work has been progressing right along. We've worked on general layouts and appearance of the building, we've worked on site design. Some of the detailed areas are yet to be done. Some of the material selections have been addressed, but not all of them yet, and color selections are still underway. Code analysis was important for the building. We need to make sure as we rehabilitate this building for generations to come that we are turning it up to current code requirements. And so we've been through that with a code that addresses the existing buildings in Michigan, as well as new construction in Michigan. Technical drawings are, again, moving right along. We've finished with the concept stages and the thematic stages. And just this week completed the design development stages. We move next into the construction document and specification stages. You can see there's just a layout of the proposed building with the new elevator added, the stairwells, and the handicapped accessible restrooms. Some of the detailed engineering that's been ongoing includes the building and the site. Site work will include some updates to the lower receiving area that where you used to enter the basement to the council chambers down there. We also have to do some specialized engineering yet to be able to do the riverside of construction. And we'll have to have a copper dam to hold back the water so that we can get in there to rehabilitate that side of the building, that face of the water. 予权衡模型 has been going on, exploring and analyzing different options for the addition to the building. The addition is proposed now on the west side of the building to protect the public view as much as possible from the street side. And we're moving along with that and, again, analyzing different options with it. You see there the addition at the left side of the building in that bottom right-hand photograph. Actually, not photograph, 3D model. And then you can tell the difference between the old portion and the new portion by looking at the porch roof, which is shown in red there on the old portion and gray on the new portion. We've begun our process for governmental approvals with our pre-meetings that happened. We will be submitting to the Historic District Commission, to the Planning Commission, and to the zoning board of appeals. So those meetings are coming up starting at the end of January and going through the beginning of March with our goal to submit four building permits by April 1st. We also know that we do have to get environmental permits for our work on the riverside of this project, and so that takes some time. Those permit processes are ongoing, preparing materials to be submitted. Cunningham Lip, the construction manager for the project, will be kicking off the bidding sometime in April. And then construction is anticipated to be May of '25 through March of 2026. Are there any questions of anybody else this evening?
A couple of questions on your soil borerings. I see that you went down to, it's just the one you submitted in the packet? You went down to 3.5 feet below grade, was that an interior one?
That was an interior one, and what happened was when they went down, they get to a point where they say they hit refusal, which means they just couldn't go any further because of the stones and other materials that were down in the hole.
Right, because it says you went down through two layers of concrete.
Yes, the mill in the 1960s was extensively renovated. And during that time, they raised the floor level in the basement about two feet. So they put in a layer of sand and then another concrete floor. And so we had to go through both of those to explore what the conditions were that might be affecting the building and the building.
Isn't it unusual to find fill between the concrete levels? It says fine, silty sand, fine gravel.
Not necessarily from that. Fill materials are often under floors of sand or gravelstone. So it wasn't completely unexpected to find things like that in there.
And on your diagram, the, this one?
The side diagram.
So what is that, it looks, I think it's a supplemental, possibly additional? Is that the cement, is that a cement pad that goes to that? If that's the diagram that you're looking at. So the mill, do we have a pointer here?
It's on there. I think it's in the moment. This is the mill building itself right now. Here's the porch on it. This is the proposed addition. The addition probably would be elevated, the second stairwell, and the accessible restrooms. And then I think the area that you're talking about also is downing here. We reference that just as a receiving area because that's the area where the dumpster will need to be located, some mechanical equipment. So that area gets repaved as part of this project because of the disruption with construction.
And then is part of the work too stabilizing the underlayer?
We need to stabilize the lean in the building and arrest it so it doesn't go any farther. And so the work does include adding what we call counterforts on to the south side of the building, under the porch, so it isn't anything that will be seen. And it kind of acts like an anchor to the basement to keep it from leaning any further. We also introduce, there's concrete block walls in the basement right now, but we'll introduce reinforced concrete block walls in the basement, and they'll act like buttresses would on the inside. So those two elements are strong elements in stopping that building from continuing to lean in the future and, again, get it stabilized for many generations.
Jerry, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. The extension of the mill pod and completion, when you think this will be done? So the extension is up to 2026 now, correct? The addition on the building, yes, would continue through early 2026, probably about March. And when do you see that it would be ready for the residents?
Ryan, would you like to come up and comment about it? Ryan is with Cunningham Lip, and he is more knowledgeable about how the construction will occur than I am. I'm drawing to keep building.
I'm Ryan Barker, I'm with contractor Cunningham Lip. Probably see a timeframe as when it'll be ready to occupy for the times of residence that people will be in classes and that March timeframe for the network.
For March of 2026?
Correct.
Thank you.
Ryan, go.
I'm really interested in seeing what that copper dam's going to look like. So more to come on that, I'm sure. And your environmental permits, they consider the black paint and all that stuff, right?
They do, and of course their legal, legal environmental folks will be concerned about any paint that might be falling into the river or any construction elements might be falling into the river, so.
Well, we'll have a process in place to handle that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Tell them.
I have no questions. I know I see material selections are still at 50%. On the exterior of the old building, where we started, still proposing wood scraped and painted, I saw on the plans.
The old historic portion of the mill will be scraped and painted again. And the new addition will use a semiticious type of clapboard siding. So it can come with pre-finished versus the older portion that will have to be scraped and painted.
Can you use a modern, modern material on the old building?
We can use a modern material on the old building. While we would love to use all wood on the old building, the wood products that we have available to us today are not the same quality and don't have the same longevity as they did 75, 100, 150 years ago. So the new addition will use some modern material.
Modern, I have one more question. So how long do you think the paint will last on this building? I don't know the last time it was painted, but longevity of what you're planning on doing, using it, scraping all the wood down, how long do you think until we'll have to do this? Because we don't get $4 million yet, so we need to know that.
We will be discussing paint, working with the paint manufacturers such as Sherwood Williams is one of them that we work very closely with in doing the proper preparation of the material. The primers are being recommended, and then with finished products. They'll give us a better idea, but I'm anticipating maybe somewhere in the range of 12 to 15 years. I think it's probably been more than 20 since the last time it was painted. Similarly, synthetic modern materials that we have today, that's about what their finished ratings are as well. So they should be pretty compatible with each other. Okay, thank you.
Do any of the residents have any questions about the mill? Okay, if you would stand up, state your name, and then ask a question, please. We'll start with, please.
Want me up there?
Yeah.
Chris King, 857 Beach Buggy. I'm wondering, with the new things you guys have found, I don't know if you anticipated this or not, I'm wondering if the amount of grant money that we're going to receive is going to be adequate to do this job?
So we've went through some budgeting phases right now, but as the drawings develop and we go through and do a public bid, that's when we'll go through and get a better understanding. But as of right now, we're pretty close to go through and utilizing all the funds that we have filled out.
Patrick Brower, 522 Alder Street. How's this going to work with the historical part of the lean, adding an elevator, adding different materials and addition? Usually they're really strict, aren't they?
We will be visiting the Historic District Commission with this project and seeking their certificate of co-reliance. This is what we would call a restoration of the middle portion and a rehabilitation. So when we rehabilitate a historic building, that means that we bring it up to a point where it might meet our modern expectations for a building, such as handicapped accessibility in the building. And that is the prime reason, which is fire safety and accessibility for the addition. So we are allowed to add additions to historic buildings. And the Secretary of Interior Standards, which your HTC follows, gives guidance on how those should be architecturally designed and the treatments for those. And so we're looking at those as we're working on this design.
Any further comments or questions?
I have one quick question. What about that area right on the hill, still be accessible while you guys are working on it?
Just hang on real quick, sir, there's somebody coming up, I think you can come next time.
Jay Kellner, 350 Andrea Avenue. I actually manage Sherwood Williams in Fenton. So I would like to be in contact with you guys and we could discuss products and stuff. There are products out there now that have, you know, lifetime warranties or something. Circuits are pre-proper, so. I don't really give a card or, okay, thank you, give that things.
Okay, sir, if you can, I'll turn my microphone. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Maybe this question, maybe this has already been answered, but I'm just curious, are they still going to be using the area around the building, like during the summer? Like the concerts and that sort of thing, will that be canceled off this year?
No, the concerts are at the gazebo area, and we don't anticipate that being closed during renovations.
All right, just curious, thank you.
Any additional questions?
Mr. President from San Antonio Court. I want to know, you're doing these designs, what are your plans to do with this building? Are you going to turn it to something different than the library? When you're doing the construction?
So future use is still yet to be determined. So council has not went through the request for proposal process yet, that is still yet to come. So what will happen is it'll be advertised for request for proposals. Ideas can be brought forward for future use, and then they would be brought back to council for consideration. So as of right now, we don't, none of those decisions on future use have been made. They're just strictly, tonight they're just strictly talking about the renovations and the construction that's necessary and going through that process so we can keep things moving.
So under the construction, if you choose to do this as something different, will there be a code? Say, example, that you want to make the police station the bottom. Will there be a code for construction on that?
The design process, right now, we've been utilizing a variety of different uses in the building to make those code decisions, including businesses and assembly-type spaces, work interview-type spaces. So we've looked at a variety of uses and accommodated the code requirements for those various uses.
All right, thank you. Any further resident questions? Okay. Then we'll be moving on. I want to see, can we get chairs? Do we have any more chairs?
There's a lot of open seats up here, too.
Yeah.
There's a lot of open seats for anybody in the back that wants to come forward, so.
If anybody would like to have a seat, there's some.
Jackie, thank you, Ryan, thank you.
Thank you so much, Jackie and Ryan.
So let's go really quickly, Madam Mayor. So tonight, if what you've seen that Jackie and Ryan presented, we're looking to move it through to the next steps with the permitting processes, going through approvals from Planning Commission, zoning board, HDSEEDs. Again, not talking future use, that's still yet to come back to the council. But with the plan that they presented tonight, with the addition, the ADA improvements, all of those things, if council is okay with that, then we will move it to the next stages, if that's okay. So everybody's okay to move it on?
Is everyone up here?
No issues here?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item is a public hearing. Public meetings hearing for 2025 through 2027 community development block grant.
So we just need to open up the public hearing. Technically, at 6:54, we would open up the public hearing to receive public comments, and I'll give a little bit of an update as to what we're looking at tonight. So in front of you guys, you actually have a resolution to consider later on in the agenda, not right now, an application for CDBG project for '25 through '27. We currently, we have a unique situation with this. So more recently, every five years HUD goes through and does census update. And in the last census update, geographically, half of the city was designated as low to moderate. Not that half of our city residents are considered low to moderate income, but just geographically, half of our city falls into a low to mod area. So what that does is open it up for us to consider additional applications. We're not getting additional funding, we still have $26,142 for that three-year allocation. We currently, right now, have an approved application that's already went through this process of council approval and went through the county approval process. And that's for ADA improvements on the community center for the bathrooms. So tonight, the application that is in front of you is actually for an additional project. Not that we're abandoning that project for the ADA improvements, but we would be considering an additional application in the event the applicant, or the project for the ADA improvements comes in over budget. Then we could allocate the funds then to this application that you have in front of you for senior services, okay? The CDBG funding is very limited on what we can and cannot spend funds on. And because of the low to mod designation in half of our community, we have a little bit more flexibility on what those funds can and cannot be used on, as long as it benefits that, you know, the demographic in that area. Or we can utilize it for senior, senior center operations, things of that nature. The previous applications, whenever they would come before council, because we did not have that low to moderate designation, obviously entire citywide, then they have to be used for ADA improvements. Very specific, very, very specific. So we've only been successful with typically getting ADA improvement projects through the process previously. So with this new designation, it does give us a little bit more flexibility. And it does give us the opportunity to, in the event that we abandon that initial project that's already been approved, then we can divert those funds instead of losing those. And I think, Brad, you could probably speak to the allocations, that a lot of times when a community cannot fulfill the project, we don't get to keep those funds, they go back to an allocation committee that's redistributed out amongst many other communities. So unfortunately, we're not getting additional funding. It's just allowing us to potentially expand the footprint and allow some.
Allocation committee at the county level gets a pot of money from HUD every year, and we divide it out based on demographics of the community, so that is correct. Anything that is left, if we don't use it, the community, the community loses it. It has to be for that project. If they have anything left over, we transfer it back into the pot. If there's enough money in the pot at the end of the year, we'll put a call out for projects, again, they're making. Submit, like that doesn't happen very often. Not a whole, not a lot of money that's actually available for that project. So usually it gets transferred over to Habitat or immunity or one of the, you know, shelter group rescue operations of the flood.
So Madam Mayor, right now, we would just want to open it up to any public comments from the audience, and then we would, once they're done, we would close the public hearing and then move on.
Are there any public comments? Come on up to the microphone, please.
I'm Anne Holerner, I live at 152 West Rockston Road, London. So on the website, it says that the public would be allowed to express community development needs into proposed projects. But in the, it's already been decided, so where does public, you know, signatures? And when we come in, we sign in saying that, you know, we attended the hearing. But if it was already decided, you know, why are we signing that we agree with it? You know, there's lots of things listed here. The special assessment system, the historic preservation, light renewables. You know, I have some ideas, but, you know, I don't think it's fair that it's just already decided for us and then, you know, pretend that it's a, we have some input.
Do you want me to try to, try to field that? So as I communicated earlier, we already have an approved project that we're not planning on abandoning. We're trying, we're planning on already moving forward, which it went through the similar process. We have to go through a public hearing, notice of process with the tri-county. We have to hold just what we are here tonight. You know, we're happy to hear any suggestions that you might have, but we already have an approved project. We're actually putting in an additional application. And this additional application would then potentially be able to expand on our senior services and any necessary needs here. And that's if. And that's if that project, that initial project is abandoned. So please, if you have any, any recommendations, I, I think everyone here is happy, happy to hear those.
Okay. So, um, I had a couple ideas. Um, so like in front of the, um, city hall, there's two parking spots. Um, when you pull up there and the spots are right at the corner. Um, I've seen time and again where it's dangerous for people to cross over. And there's usually, um, at least in the past, there's been a big, um, vehicle parked there. And so you can't see, um, you know, case in point, a teenager was on his bicycle and he was, you know, he was properly watching. But I did not see him because he was, um, covered by the big vehicle there, which, you know, should have been in employee parking lot as far as I'm concerned. So is there a electronic, um, thing where, you know, people can cross there safely? You know, I think it's a public service, um, or I mean, a safety issue. Um, the other idea was the city hall is in great need of renovations or updating or, you know, I know twenty-six thousand, you know, isn't enough for that or whatever, but I think that's important as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Come on up, sir.
This is open to new business and right or whatever, whatever, you want to talk about?
No, this is only specific for the CDBG project.
Okay, I, I missed it, but I'll be ready.
Anyone further on the public hearing?
So, uh, I'm Denise Lowson at three sixteen Valley Drive, London. So twenty-six thousand dollars, I'm still waiting for a sidewalk to go down Hyatt Lane. Um, I would like to see something happen there because I'm trying to walk my dog every day. And I take my life into my hands every day. And it's only getting worse and worse and worse as more and more people travel through our community. It's not safe there, there's no sidewalk, there's barely a, any type of a road bed there to be able to stay there. There's no shoulder, there's nothing. Why can't we take some of that money? I thought we were supposed to be starting on this with the, uh, safe, um, to school pathways in the fall. Fall is gone, we're in winter now, what happened?
So the Safe Routes to School, uh, Safe Routes to School project has not been abandoned. So we are, that'll be coming, uh, in twenty-twenty-five. Um, that, I think you could probably specifically talk more about that. But, um, the project does include pathway, uh, down Hyatt and Stan Eaton, so that's still yet to come. And that was with the grant that we secured from, from the Safe Routes to School.
Any further public comment on the special hearing?
Really quickly, Madam Mayor, to, to, to Ms. Lerner's point. Um, Monica, I, I, I do hear you and I do hear what you're saying in regards to the, to the two suggestions. With this new, um, development, uh, with the consideration for low to mod, the funds can only be used within that designation area. So city hall and technically it falls outside of that area. So that's why we have to be very specific with what we're proposing tonight. So, thank you.
I call the public hearing closed at seven oh four P M. Do we have any correspondence?
No.
Then the next item, uh, is public comment. Uh, any person wishing to address the city council during a meeting will get three minutes under public comment. When the public comment is approached on the agenda, individuals wishing, wishing to speak will be called upon utilizing the build-out comment forms. Remarks should be addressed to the presiding officer. It is not time to debate, but for questions or comments for council and for staff. Questions will be answered if the information is readily available. If answers are not available during the meeting, council or staff will contact the individual within forty-eight hours and respond to the questions within ten days or when the information becomes available. So anyone that wishes to speak tonight and they could fill out a public comment form, hit back in the back. First up is Judy Preston.
I want to address the water issue. The water rates and the way the water bill was handed out. If you are going to have a water bill, you need to put an infrastructure bill to the people and a water bill to the people. That is two separate budgets in the plan. Nobody is explaining what kind of bond, how long the bond is here, how long we're going to pay. It's twenty years and what I calculated, everybody ought to know right now, it's twenty thousand dollars in twenty years out of your pocket.
Monica Lerner.
That's it? Excuse me?
She's naming people, sir, she's just reading off the list.
But you didn't answer her question. Is, is it twenty thousand dollars? Is that what we're at?
Yes, sir. So as I read, we have, once public comment is completely over, okay, that's by law. We have to let y'all speak. That's our job is to let y'all speak and us to listen and then we can answer.
I apologize.
It's okay. Monica Lerner.
Monica Lerner, one five two West Rolston. So, um, just because I don't have a well, or I do have a well, doesn't mean that I shouldn't, that I should overlook the fact that the water increase is not fair for the other people. So hearing that water bills have doubled, um, and it seems to be tied into the pipe size. So if that's the real reason, then why isn't there a formula for the pipe size to be equal to the people that have the lesser pipe size? Um, that shouldn't be that hard to figure out. So the water usage, you know, should, should be fair. That, that's out for that. So then moving on to public safety, um, so last few times that I've spoken, I've not received, um, feedback on that. So we still have the issue with the disregard of speed limits, um, in the city of London. Um, so namely Rolston Road and Ripley Road seems to be the, the one that's, um, the worst, if you want to say that, but it's all over. Um, we have trees and branches blocking signs. Um, you know, raising the speed limit is not the answer to the problem. Um, we only have one officer on duty at a time, but I see the London police cars in Fenton quite a bit. So what's happening with London? And then, um, the domestic ducks. So the police, the city of London, the N R, animal control, et cetera, allowed those ducks to roam free in Triangle Park. They are not prevented by ordinance. They were not fenced in and their eggs were consumed by neighborhood. They were left huddled by the drainpipe trying to get water. So here we are back to the water problem then, to top it all off. The D N R has been sending out warnings about the A D M flu. And that can be communicable to humans. So there again is another public safety problem.
Thank you. Marshall Harker.
My name is Marshall Harker. I live at six three Gambler Lane, Michigan. My question is, this whole thing about switching from our water to N R per water. It, it, it's like, I feel you folks here are supposed to represent what we want. And I don't think that's what's going on. Because I thought that should have been brought to a vote of two residents and it wasn't. It was decided by you, which I think is wrong. Um, and, and, and just besides the water thing, it's like the roads. You, you don't upkeep the roads. You wait till the road falls apart, then you get a special assessment, put a new road in. But then, then when you get the cracks in the road or the potholes in the road, they're not filled in. And then when the weather changes, it's the, the concrete or the asphalt up. So then, then you gotta put another new road in. And then the next, then you get another special assessment. That's not right. You know, I've lived in other cities where they, I live in, should I watch these shorts? When there's a crack in the road, they tar. So the water doesn't seep down in that crack and cause that problem to happen. And I just wonder why this goes on in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Schmidt.
Appreciate you taking my questions tonight and I apologize for talking out of turn. I know it's going to be a busy meeting. Uh, my question about the water was the, um, the bonds that were sold, so hopefully we'll hear what happened there. Uh, my other question was, um, the federal infrastructure dollars that came to the state of Michigan for projects like this. If the city at all got money from that, or still can get money from that, I understand you can. Um, and there's some chatter online that if you go from a one inch down to a three-quarter inch water line in your home, your water rates will go down. I'm not saying that's true, I'm not saying it's false. Alls I'm saying is there's a lot of chatter online about that. And obviously, everybody's here to figure out how they can lower the water bills. So if that's something that can be done, maybe we should think about doing that. Um, the other thing is, I'd like to, if I could, see a show of hands from the city council and the mayor, if I'm not out of line, who voted for the water to be changed over? And I don't know if, if we could do that now or if we can get a list of who did that. But I think it's beneficial to the community to know who's got an interest, uh, at heart.
Well, may I ask you? We, we all have your interest at heart, sir. I live right down the street and I want to go one up to it. So really, under, totally understand. And the water was voted on by the last council. All of us were here, yes, and online, people are being called out and it's, it's harassment.
Okay, well.
It is harassment.
I'm, believe me, I'm far from harassment.
I understand.
I was just trying to figure out.
Well, I, I did and so did the last mayor and Ray Colbert, Pam Howard and Heather McDermott.
Okay. And the only reason I ask that is.
And it is in, it is in the notes. It is in the, the, um, meeting minutes online.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Really quickly, just to clarify too, and, and I know we'll try to get to some of the questions that we can usually have, but just to clarify, the vote to move to the county water happened in October of twenty-twenty-two, so it was technically two councils ago.
Yes.
And, um, the minutes are online for that meeting.
Sorry.
The, the minutes are online for that meeting. Um, so it'll clarify who voted and who did not.
And that was the October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-fourth.
I think it's October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, but it would be the last council meeting in October of twenty-two.
You can read all the comments there too, Mr. Schmidt.
Um, Bill Walker.
My name's Bill Walker. I live in, uh, Saddle Brook Farms. Of course, I got the same, uh, concern as everyone else here does about the water. Uh, I just want to give you an example. In, uh, March, from March first to, uh, May thirtieth, uh, twenty-fourth, my, my, uh, utility bill was two hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. The water portion was ninety-one dollars and five cents. And from, uh, September to, uh, November, uh, November thirtieth of last year, my bill was four hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-four cents, or twenty-six cents. And the water portion was two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents. So that's almost an increase of two hundred dollars just on the water in three months. And I know I didn't use any more water, in fact, I probably used less. And I noticed that one guy mentioned something to do with these lines are going into the house. They're a one-inch line, but you can have a three-quarter inch line. Is there, is there truth to that? Do you guys know that could be a factor?
We'll answer that in just a bit. I think we're going to try to get through most of the questions, is that, okay?
Okay, my only other question is, what's like, what, excuse me, criteria did they use to make the decision to go to this other water source? I mean, was, was London's water source like unusable anymore or was it no good or whatever? What made them decide to pay this amount of money out for a new water source? Because I'm, I'm retired now. I've been here for seven years. My, my, my taxes have almost doubled since I've lived here and now my water rate's going to triple. I mean, I'm on a fixed income. I'm sure there's probably other people here in the same boat. Thank you for hearing me.
You're welcome, thank you.
Scott Ward.
My name's Scott Ward, six oh two Silver Lake Court. You've got your chairman of the V D A. And I for one understand, uh, and been digging into and went to the public hearing and understand some of the water problems we had, um, with the low pressure, the lack of water tower, uh, towers we had, the, uh, growth in our community. Um, and this problem goes back to our council way, way, way long time ago. This isn't a problem, your problem. Um, but, uh, what I believe suggests is, is there any way we could stretch these payments out to get, make it easier for some of our citizens instead of, um, because it is a big chunk. We need their free water. But if we could anyway, spread this out and make it a little easier for, um, maybe some, some way we can help the citizens a little bit and spread that out, that chunk will change. Thank you.
Thank you. Kara Phillips.
Kara Phillips, seven one five Riverside. I suggest the community reads City of London H two O system improvement letter. States on there, unfortunately, freezing the H two O rates for twenty-eight of the previous thirty-eight years has increased as significant efficient for water systems funding. The average inflation rate during the same period averaged two point seven nine percent per year. As a result, the city lost significant ground on the effective funding for the necessary maintained and capital investments on the H two O system. Despite more recent increasing, increases in water rates, the city must continue to play catch-up and acquire sufficient revenues to pay for current and future projects. The financial advisor, Baker Tilly, made recommendations for rate increases. You can go through and read the proposal. So my question is, since this proposed rate basically doubles per quarter, which becomes unaffordable to many, what portion of this rate is for future projects? Can we see that broken out? What's our cost? What's the future project? And is there any way, so you're, according to the letter, like I said, it's going past, you know, the rates for, we're talking about, because rates weren't. you know, the rates for, we're talking about, because rates were increased 28 years ago and we're paying the cost for that. So, so what's the difference, like I said, what's the difference between, um, you know, the future projects and the current projects? And can we maybe hold off, since some people are getting hit with road taxes? And now this water? Can we hold off on those future projects, uh, for, you know, make that rate go down? You know, the, a couple of years from now? Um, has the community complained about water pressure? I'd like to know what, what subdivisions or what businesses, who's complaining about water pressure? I lived in two houses here, um, in Linden area. I have never had a problem, but that doesn't mean there isn't a problem. I read, I read the details. It sounds like there is a problem. You guys tested some lines. Um, and what subs would those be in? Can we get a list of the areas with the water pressure issues? Um, have, I know somebody already asked this. Has any federal funding or grants been looked at to help decrease the cost for our community's water bill? After all, this was not this community's fault. This was a lack of governance, uh, from increasing the rate for 28 years, which, which they didn't increase. Um, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Marta Wright.
My name is Marta Wright, and I live at 104 North Main Street. Um, I get, everybody's angry about the water, but I'm angrier that people in this community are targeting the council individually and not as a whole. I'm gonna answer this one gentleman's question. In October 24th of 1922, it was a second invite, or by former mayor, second invite on Howd to connect to the Genesee County Water System. Eyes were lines, who's no longer on the council. Simmons, Howd, Cruson, Culbert were eyes. McDermott was absent and, or she's voted no, and Brad Dick voted was absent. The next time it came up was January 23rd of 2023, where the council changed. Um, there was three things voted on that day. It was Genesee County Water Connection Contracts 1, 2, and 3. It was unanimous, 7 to nothing. Eyes, Cruson, Culbert, Simmons, Howd, Dick, McDermott, Armstrong. The second one was, um, to vote on the, the second issue. It was also, um, carried 7 to nothing. Eyes, Culbert, Armstrong, Cruson, McDermott, Howd, Dick, Simmons. The third phase was also voted, um, as unanimous, and it was the same seven people. Then on June 26th, it came to, um, the Southern Lakes Phase 2 and Phase 3 water bond. It was, um, motion was carried 6 to nothing. It was eyes by Culbert, Armstrong, Cruson, McDermott, Dick, Simmons, and Howd was absent. But I also wanted known that the motion was by Culbert and the second was by Armstrong to approve this. So I'm sick of you people targeting certain people. If you're gonna target anybody, target them as a whole. Thank you.
Whitney Foley.
Whitney Foley, 240, Pauline Pass. Um, so yes, I share the frustration with my water bill. It also doubled, which is crazy in general. But what I'm more frustrated with is that my usage is the same as a couple of my neighbors who are a family of five, and I'm a family of one and a half. It's just myself and my two-year-old. So my question is, how accurate are our meters? How often are they getting tested? And, um, what can we do to make sure that these increases stop and we get back to a reasonable amount? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further public comments? Seeing none, I'm closing this section. And we'll be addressing this, uh, in one of the sections of new business. That's where some of these will be answered. Moving on to the consent agenda.
I make the motion that we press is consent agenda. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, can we repeat who, who did?
Pam and Denise. Pam and Denise, thank you.
Speed. Do we do a roll call on that? I think there is an all A. We'll do a roll call on that, just to be safe.
Is that necessary?
Oh, it's not necessary? Okay. Okay, cool. I just wanted to verify. Thank you.
We have no unfinished business, so we're moving into, uh, new business. Uh, resolution number 01-25, identifying 2025 to 2027 Community Development Block Grant Funding Project.
Hey, Brian, could you hit the lights? It's, it's a little hard up here. Thanks, Marta. Sorry. Uh, Madam Mayor, so as I already explained earlier, the application that you have in front of you is for consideration for an additional project in the event that our original project is abandoned. Um, so we're looking for approval, um, for the CBG project, resolution 0125.
Do any residents have questions on this? Seeing none? We'll start moving. Good night, Brandon.
No questions. Thank you.
I'm fine.
Pam?
No, no, thank you.
Jerry?
I'm good. Thank you.
No questions. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to pass the block grant funding?
I make the motion that we pass resolution 01-25 to approve community development block grants on project.
Support.
Can we get a roll call, please? Armstrong?
Yes.
Howd?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dix?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Ling? Simmons, sorry.
Thank you. That's okay.
Ling?
Yes.
Motion approved. Moving on to amendment to ordinance, section 51-15B of the Goddard Black Ordinances of the City of Linden, and water rate adjustments. Ellen?
So, Madam Mayor, tonight, we have in front of you guys an amendment that we're proposing to, um, adjust the repayment for the quarterly billing from 25 days to 45 days. Currently, we sent out a quarterly bill and we felt that because, you know, obviously one's quarterly and because of the most recent substantial increases, that, um, amending the ordinance to extend it from 25 days to 45 without penalty until that 46-day would, would help, um, you know, alleviate some of this. I know it doesn't make it better, uh, but it, it's, it's at least, um, something that we can do. One of the things that we did is look at the cash flow, um, potential cash flow that it might, uh, create for the city. And after reviewing that, we don't feel, we confidently feel that this would be, um, you know, acceptable and there wouldn't, there would cause no issue. Um, and the other thing that you guys have in front of you is a, is a revised amendment to the next rate increases. But what, um, after discussions with, uh, the mayor and Mayor Protem, um, and staff, we're asking council to not consider those amendments, uh, to the rates tonight and allow us as staff to work with our financial advisors to take another look to see if any other future rate increases could be rolled out, um, in a different manner. Um, hearing, you know, obviously, the feedback and things like that. We understand everyone's frustration. My staff has been feeling a number of phone calls since, uh, uh, the Thursday after New Year's, uh, when the email bills hit. Uh, we're happy to field those calls. We're happy to discuss that with anybody. We know that it's frustrating. Um, and as I think Tara, you mentioned, you know, the letter, thank you. Uh, we did send out correspondence trying to explain. Um, that being said, we know that it doesn't make it easier or make it better. Um, but we're just here to try to, um, uh, hopefully answer any of those specific questions and, and we can get to those in a minute. But tonight, we're asking council to consider the amendment for the ordinance to extend the repayment for the quarterly billing. Hold off on the rate amendments until we can, uh, work with our, uh, financial advisors, P F M. And then we would bring those back, uh, for council consideration. Because the next proposed increases, uh, were not as significant as this most recent. Um, and they would, they, they still are necessary in order to, you know, uh, uh, pay for the, the debt and the investment into the new system and the necessary improvement. Uh, but those wouldn't hit until, correct me if I'm wrong, Brooke, but April and October was what was already approved. But we're, we've got a little bit of time that we can come back to you guys and, and, and see, um, if the, uh, financial advisors propose any different, um, structure. So tonight, it would just be for the exception on the, uh, repayment.
Do any residents have any question on the extension? Yes, sir.
It's not a, not a question, but, uh, to your question, City Hall would, I call about maybe making payments. And they, they accept payments, like monthly payments of like, you know, a hundred dollars a month. So it's not all at once.
Sir, can you speak right into the microphone?
Um, I called City Hall about making payments for the water bill. And then they'll take payment plans for like, you know, you can go pay like a hundred dollars a month. So it's not all at once. So I, I mean, I know it still sucks, but it still helps a little bit.
So please, do you have a number of residents that do, uh, do pay monthly or by?
Can we, can we just, just for a minute, so that everybody can hear everybody, please? Can we just lower the volume for a second, please? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, would you like us to try to field some of the questions at this point for some of the other public comment? Um, so, like, not to put my staff on the spot or anything, but, um, I'm gonna, no. I'm just, I'm, I'm just joking. Don, could you speak, I don't know if you can speak to the meters. I know there was, uh, several questions in regards to the meter sizes, pipe size, all of that. So could you speak to that?
So, so currently in our system, uh, for residential, uh, users, we have 5/8 inch meters and we have 1-inch meters. We do not currently have any 3/4 inch meters in the community. Um, so in regard to, can, can we, uh, reduce our meter size from 1-inch to, I, from what I've heard, I've had calls on 1-inch to 5/8. I talked to the, uh, state plumbing, uh, inspector and he said that 5H, 5/8 inch meters no longer meet plumbing code. So, so that's not an option. Uh, the follow-up question that then becomes, uh, can we go to a 3/4 inch meter? Um, that's not a, an answer I can give. That would have to come through council. And if they want to consider that, that may be an option. It also, uh, we still, keep in mind, we still have to, uh, be able to pay the debt, uh, that's out there. So the finance folks would have to run the numbers on a 3/4 inch meter and see how that would have an impact on that payback as well, so.
And then, um, just to clarify, the bonds that were taken out on the system were 20-year bonds that Genesee County Drain Commission actually, um, bonded those for us and, and definitely, um, probably had way more favorable rates than what the city would have been able to do on their own. So those bonds are 20-years repayment. Um, I know one of the other questions was, what are the proposed upgrades? Um, so in the Baker Tilly analysis, um, that is in, uh, the council packet for spring of 25,
April 8.
April 8? Okay. Thank you. Um, it does discuss what those potential capital improvements are outside of the county water connection. So they included Lindenwood, Ripley, and then water replacement. We left a placeholder in there because one of the things that we are concerned about is once we take care of the pressure and capacity issues, what that's going to do to our system, um, uh, throughout the city. And so we wanted to make sure that we left enough funding in there to be able to handle any of those potential issues that may come up with a water main break. So. Don, Brooke, please correct, I mean, jump in if, if you need, if you feel you need to.
That's correct.
Okay. And I'm just, I'm just reviewing some of the other comments. So one of the other comments was, what areas do we have identified pressure and, uh, pressure issues? And do we get complaints? Um, I started with the city in, uh, the fall of 2019, and that's probably, besides, uh, uh, the road, uh, complaints in regards to the road conditions, um, that's probably the next thing that we field, uh, the majority of the calls on is, uh, pressure issues. And Don could probably speak to that specifically, those documented areas that we have.
That's correct. There's, um, there's issues throughout town. Uh, some of the areas that are worse are down in the southeast, uh, section of the, of the city. And then some issues up in the, uh, north side, uh, north of, um, the water treatment plant. There's issues up that way as well. And just for public consumption, so the recommended standard by the state of Michigan and 10 state standards is that water system should be between 60 and 80 PSI. Our normal operating pressure, uh, and, and never below 35 PSI. Our normal operating pressure in the system here is 55 PSI. Very few people get that. Um, and then we have areas, sections of the community that are down in the twenties, uh, for, for water pressure. So, um, unfortunately, we're not within the recommended, uh, standards and we're actually below the recommended minimum.
Hang on, just a second. I don't know that we're gonna do a back, back and forth necessarily, but, um, let me try to get to some of the other answers and maybe, maybe we'll clear this up. So I think Scott, you asked the question about potentially stretching this out. And, and so I, hopefully I addressed that in allowing us to go back to the, uh, with our financial advisors and look at any future increases, increases and potentially have a different method for rolling those out. So, um, that's something that we're gonna work on. Uh, Mr. Walker asked, uh, in regards to, is Linden's water source unusable? Uh, no. Our, our water, our current water, uh, that we, we get through ground wells, uh, is quality. It meets all of the testing requirements and things like that. So it's not a matter of water quality. It's a matter of source, um, and looking at how we, uh, resolve those longstanding pressure and capacity issues. Uh, sorry, I'm just trying to make sure that we get to everybody, um, that I can, uh, to be able to, um, I think we answered the question on who voted, who did not vote. The bonds. Oh, Don, can you speak to the accuracy of the meters too for, for, uh, uh, the lady that asked in Pauline Pass?
Sure. So the, the meters in this town are probably about as accurate as it can get because they had a major, um, meter replacement program that took place. I think it was back in 20 and 21. Uh, so the meters are very accurate. Um, we do tell residents that, um, if, if they think there's an error, um, I'll be honest, I've never seen one in, in my 30 years. Um, we will send the meter out to, to have it tested. Um, if it is faulty, we'll pay for that test. If it's not faulty, the resident has to pay for that test. Um, but, you know, they're, they're very accurate.
Thank you, Don. Um, and to a gentleman, uh, asked earlier, um, he asked, uh, why we would be connecting to the Ann Arbor water. And just, just to clarify, this has nothing to do with Ann Arbor. We're connecting actually to the Kerragandie Line, uh, with Genesee County. Um, and so it's surface water from Lake Huron, um, that we are, that we are connecting to. So it has nothing to do with Ann Arbor or any, or, or I know we've heard Flint too. It's not Flint City Water. This is the Kerragandie Line, uh, that comes down 69, um, and is treated in Lapeer. Um, so, to hopefully answer that question. And then there was a question in regards to, why don't we do a separate billing? So we, we, um, we're not required to do a separate billing. One of the things that we are going to do, that our treasurer's actually already started working on, um, hindsight's always 2020, right? Um, I'm sure everybody can, can speak to that. But, uh, one of the things that the city has not done in the past has break down, um, uh, the bill to a level of detail that maybe some people. to a level of detail that maybe some people would like to see. So, in your next quarterly billing, you will see that broke down to a level of detail to show your size meter. Brooke, maybe you can speak to that specifically as to how far it will be broke down.
So, we plan on breaking, so currently, we plan on breaking it down to including the meter size under bill. Don't quote me on that one yet, we're still in talks with our programmers. We're hoping to get the meter size on there. To the water, it will itemize the flat rates as well as the ready-to-serve fee and then it'll show the rates for the water. So, that, it just breaks it down better. On the sewer, potentially as well, itemized down to ready-to-serve and then your usage fees. So, garbage is self-explanatory. So, it's maybe a new format, we're not sure if we're gonna be able to use the current format or it's gonna look totally different, which if there's any questions, myself and Jen, my deputy, are all there.
And then there was a general question about what considerations went into making the switch and I can start that off and hopefully our DPW director can, can help me with that conversation too, a little bit in more in detail. Back in '21, we were approached by Charter Senior Living of Fenton Township to service them with water. And we had an interim DPW director at the time and, you know, as we knew that we had documented pressure and capacity issues since the 90s, you know, longstanding issues that had not been resolved, we were concerned about being able to service this development and still being able to meet our own demand. So, right away, we got to work with our engineers to consider some, some possible improvements to the system at that time. We were, we did not know that the county was an option, the county water connection was an option. The option that we were moving forward was, was investing in our own system of our own ground, groundwater and expanding our water towers to, to take care of the capacity and pressure issues. And then I guess, Don, I'll let you jump in here to talk about the county connection specifically. And later on, as we had further conversations in regards to other, other services, we currently, and for decades, the city has already been with Genesee County for sewer. So, Genesee County already handles our sewer. And so, this model looks very similar to that method. And so, when we had went in to discuss the, with them about sewer, they had talked to us about Fenton Township, expanding the water connection and asked for our interest in that. And we did express interest as at least to explore and compare the two options. And so, Don, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure. If I could do just maybe two or three minutes' worth of history. So, as the city manager mentioned, there, there were hydraulic analysis done back in the 90s. The, the city knew that they had issues with fire flows specifically back in the 90s. They had a hydraulic analysis conducted. It confirmed that there were fire flow issues back then. They made some recommendations on what the community could do in order to increase those fire flows. What they were looking for at that time was 1,000 gallons per minute. So, if there's a big draw from fire trucks, multiple hydrants being used, whatever it may be, a fire suppression system, the system needs to be able to flow 1,000 gallons per minute in order to maintain ISO insurance rating. They found areas in the community that were in the 500 and 600 gallon per minute range. So, again, they made some recommendations. The other report we came across was another hydraulic analysis that was conducted back in 2015 and updated in 2018. But what had happened during that time is not enough improvements were made. So, not only was fire flow an issue, but they identified the pressure concerns that, that we were talking about tonight. And that's where they came up with the, the examination that showed that we were down in the twenties in, in some of our residential neighborhoods. So, again, they made recommendations on things that, that needed, needed to happen in order to take care of those, those issues. Fast forward to 2021, as the city manager said, they, they got with the engineers and said, okay, what would it, what would it take to address these issues? Not knowing that the county was an option yet, they started investigating the possibility of building two new larger water towers. The way a water system works is your pressures are based on the height of your, the height of your water towers along with the pump pressures that you're pushing into the system. We could not achieve higher system pressures without replacing the water towers because they're not tall enough. So, they would just simply overflow. So, they started doing an analysis on what it would take to do that. It included, like I said, two new water towers, increase the, the pump capacity around the community on the, on the different wells. And again, you know, required a significant investment. It was after that, that we had heard that the, that the county option was potentially available. At that time, the county was trying to make a determination on where they were gonna route water main to, to feed our neighbors. And that's when they said, potentially, we can route this where your community would benefit from it. So, we went in that direction. The main reason being is legacy costs. So, when you have water treatment plants, when you have water towers, obviously, there's a lot of maintenance that goes into keeping those within standards. And everything also has, you know, a life expectancy. And so, you have to go through and replace those on a, on a regular basis, depending on what the component is. Some things, you know, pump maintenance, that sort of thing is sometimes in the 10-year range. Water treatment plants, water towers, I know are 40, 60, 80-year lifespan. So, one of the things we were considering is, you know, the cost of a water tower today versus the cost of a water tower, you know, 50, 60 years from here. Those are all calculations that you have to consider when making these kinds of decisions. The county, being a regional system, spreads those costs out among, among the region, you know, so not just one entity has to maintain an independent system. So, in a nutshell, that was why the council decided to go with the county.
Thank you. And then, there was a question in regards to grants or additional funding. And so, the city has, has tried to apply for multiple grants and other funding to help alleviate some of the cost. We, we applied for state revolving fund dollars and we're, we're on the list, we're just really, really low on, on the list. So, we don't, our community does not hit a lot of the benchmarks, unfortunately, for those types of fundings, but, so unfortunately, we missed the mark on that. The other funding that we did receive was actually, because it was a multi-jurisdictional project with the county, they, they shared some of their ARPA dollars with us to, to the tune of 1.5 million. I think it was 1.5, and I see John sitting in the back. John, is that, is that correct? Was it 1.5 million overall with the entire?
For phase two and three.
For phase two and three?
6.5.
Okay. Oh, so a 6, 6.5 shared amongst, okay. And then, the other thing that we did apply for is appropriations from Kildee's office that is still a, a potential. Obviously, Kildee's not in, in that seat, but I did speak with the, the office the other day, Jake Bennett from, from that office. And it is still a, a potential that we could receive some additional funding to help buy that down. So, we're, we're trying as much as possible to look for any type of funding and things like that, not just for the water, but for all things, you know, city. So, hopefully, that answers most of the questions for the specific tonight. If, if we didn't happen to answer your specific question, please find us afterwards or we'll be happy to follow up with any individual. So, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you for a vote for the amendment to the ordinance.
Do I have a motion to amend the ordinance, 51, dot, 15, the, of the city of Linden?
I make the motion that we approve this amendment.
Support that. Howden, Simons, Howden made the motion and Simons seconded, okay.
Dick?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fix?
Yes.
Simons?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item up tonight is the discussion item on the garbage container dispute is the gentleman, Mr. May, is he here tonight?
Madam Mayor, I think he had, I don't know if he's got questions specific to it.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
Because what the gentleman said are kind of, you said the southeast part of the city has been the worst part, probably the role of water pressure, is that correct? I actually live in the southeast part of the city. I'll let me ask this. When are they going to the new, to the new water source and should I see an immediate increase in my water pressure when they go to that source?
So, tentatively, we plan to switch over to the county water system in March. Variable factors on that, depending on how other things progress. And no, you will not see an immediate increase and, and I'll explain why. So, we have an old system that's used to, you know, approximately 55 PSI or less. So, what I've discussed with the county is, we want them to come at, in at a similar rate. We want to see how our system adjusts to that, to that new connection. And then, we're gonna start ramping it up slowly, you know, and I, you know, we'll, we'll discuss it depending on how things respond, but maybe five PSI at a time. Let it settle on the system for a period of time, make sure we're not seeing any major issues, ramp it up another five PSI. So, that's gonna be our approach. So, it's, it's not like on day one, when the connection's made, you'll all of a sudden get that additional, you know, pressure.
Is Mr. May, or Sarah Banks, or May, asked for this discussion item about garbage cans?
So, no, this, this was just brought forward to you guys. You guys have probably heard, heard this before. We've had several, a couple of residents on Broad, Broad Street, yes, asked for consideration to changing the ordinance in how long the garbage carts can be left out and stuff. Currently, our ordinance does not address a timeframe, but it was something that had been brought forward to council before and council did not act on it. They didn't feel that we had enough of an issue with that and, and stuff. So, there's a little bit of history there with this specific issue, but I know that it was brought to the, to the mayor's attention for consideration tonight, but it looks like those individuals are not here. So, I guess, maybe at a future meeting, if it needed to be addressed, that's something that could come forward, so.
City manager's up here.
Okay. I'm sure you guys are probably sick to hear me talk. Sorry about that. I don't, I don't have a ton and for this, just out of respect for everyone's time and things like that, I, I will just hit a few highlights. Obviously, we're coming back from the holidays. I'd like to thank my staff for all their efforts in these past couple of weeks and things like that with fielding, the concerns and questions from our residents and businesses. And again, I'll encourage you all, if you have questions, we have a phenomenal staff. Please come in, please call us. We will try to help navigate the situation. If you know someone who is struggling with repayment, things like that, we will try to help pair you up and point you in the direction of any type of assistance, stuff like that. So, as the gentleman said earlier, not that it's favorable, but if, if you'd like to set up some type of a similar budget plan to what you do for other things, our, our treasurer's department's willing to take, you know, different methods for, for repayment for that. So, so I just want to throw that out there. Our Civic Plus is live, which Civic Plus is our new notification system. So, it is live. I think since we put it out on social media, we've only had 10 people sign up. So, sign up, tell your neighbors, tell everybody so we can get people on the system and so that's going to, go ahead. Oh, yes. So, the scan code on the newsletter, for, for whatever reason, is not working. The, or yeah, the QR code on the newsletter that was sent out is not working, but we do have that information. There was a social media post, we have the information on our website. And the link, though, the actual web address that is in the newsletter is accurate and working. So, I just encourage you guys to go out there, sign up for it. It's just a mass notification system that in the event that we have something that needs to get out to the residents, that we have a, a format to do that. We already started working on the 25, 26 budget. It seems early, but it's really not. We're kind of a little bit behind. So, we, we, our staff has been well underway. I think I communicated that at previous meetings of, of working on the 25, 26 budgets. And then, we've already started planning for summer events, specifically Back to the Bricks. We had, we have a meeting upcoming for this week for the Back to the Bricks event and so, that's really it. I'll, I'll leave it, if anybody has any questions for me from council, happy to field any, any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Next, we will go to the council comments.
I have a couple of questions and maybe the attorney can answer. I had listened to, or looked at, Mr. Neighbor, people were wondering if we could get out of the contract for the water. And I just want the attorney to answer the question possibly.
So, the contract was approved, as was mentioned quite some time ago. It has not been brought to my attention. Grounds for setting that aside, I'm not aware of any. There was some discussion about whether that needed to be brought to vote of the people under the charter. When the issue initially came up, I was asked that very question. In my opinion, was no, it did not. Section 9.7 of your charter specifically provides some exceptions to vote of the people and this, this situation, in my opinion, falls squarely within that exception.
Thank you. I also have another question or just a comment. I know that I personally get on the monthly plan, I've been on for the water and my water bill. So, every month, I go in and I, or online, I pay a hundred dollars. And that actually gives me a surplus if I had overage. That does help. And I know the, the two ladies over here will be definitely helping anybody with like that. I listened to, I went and talked to Don a little bit and what really scares me is that we might have not, it might happen, you know, our union block starts on fire again on the other side and what we would do if we don't have the pressure. I don't know how many people were here that seen the fire in 2007.
Seen it.
It was horrific. I, I was at my house and I started seeing things fall from, from the sky and it was like little ashes. And it was horrible. People stood down there and watched the whole union block catch on fire while we had our fire truck pumping water from the river because the hydrants couldn't keep up. So, that does, that does concern me, all of us own homes and we don't want to have a problem with trying to get water. You know, we're seeing that right now in other states. But I would reach out to the two ladies about getting together and maybe making some plans. I'm getting to say water bill, but I think together as a community, we can help, you know, maybe make this better. And they're coming up with some ideas that, stretching things out. And if you do have any questions, please ask them because they're willing to answer. Thank you.
Brenda?
Yeah, just a few things. Southern Lakes Parks and Rec are, they're meeting on the 24th and we'll be talking about the State Bank Trail update. We're still anticipating construction in the spring of '25, so coming up here really soon. Also, I might have misspoke on the vote to go to the Genesee County water. That was 10/24/22, just so that we're clear on the meeting minutes. And it was Mr. Weins, Colbert, myself, Howden and Cusa. My last name is Simons. And as was stated by, I think, Mar, Marta, Mr. Fix was absent and McDermott was a name. So, just to be clear on that. Now, the only thing I want to say about that is I want to go forward, guys. I want to go forward, I want to go forward. We have four new council people. I've seen a line disparaging of them already and saying, hold their feet to the fire. And it's like this constant rallying battle cry, like it's us and you and it's... And it's like this constant rallying battle cry, like it's us and you and it's not. It's us and us. Because guess what? We're you. I live down the street. She, she lives around the corner. He lives across the way in one of the areas that is, is now getting to the new streets. She lives around the corner from me. We're all residents here. Decisions were made about the water because we were, oh my gosh, you guys, the data, the data shows it all. And all I can say tonight is look at what's happening in LA. They're canceling people's homeowners insurance. They canceled their insurance two weeks before the fires. They knew. They knew this could happen. I, let's not even talk about the union block. I'm talking about my house and your house and yours and yours. I want to talk about your places. You know, we want that water. I want them to be, I'll come around the corner and it takes them 30 seconds to get to my house and put out that fire before I sustain much damage. Right? Don't you all want that? I want that. That's why I voted for this and, and that's why I think it's the best thing we can do for ourselves. So like I said, I want to go forward and up back. I don't want to blame people. I don't want to sit here and say, we're going to hold you accountable. We're going to work together. Yeah, I love this. Come on in, ask questions and be respectful. Like I've seen a lot of respect tonight and I'm so happy about that. This is wonderful. This is, this, this is the way to go forward. So if we can do that, that would really make me happy. And I think that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Brenda.
I really don't have a voice tonight, so I'm going to have no comment.
He doesn't feel so hot.
All right, then we're going to bounce over to Jerry.
I have just a couple of comments. One, on a topic that really wasn't discussed a whole lot. I know we switched over to a new garbage company. Some individuals have asked questions why we've not got new garbage cans. If your garbage cans are damaged, they will replace them with new garbage cans from, from their facility. If they, what they did is they purchased the garbage cans from Republic, so will continue to use those, but if yours are damaged, they will replace those damaged garbage cans. And then on to the topic of the night, which is the water. I did go in and spend some time with Don and Ellen and several members of their staff to kind of go through this because I wanted to get a history of where this started, what caused this, why are we at where we're at today? It was a very good conversation. It was a lot of affirmation. And it, my take from it was here recently, since 2021 is when we started identifying, what are we going to do to try to solve this problem? This problem existed since 1999, was identified in 1999. That problem would have been there before, but it was not taken care of. No steps were taken care of to do maintenance on the system, enough maintenance. I'm not going to say none, enough maintenance on the system. So basically what we're doing is paying for the sins of, sins of our fathers, our forefathers, correct? But also somebody said it's, you know, really not our responsibility if we were left with that. I, I'll disagree with that and the fact that this problem is here, this is our problem to try to resolve. It might not be as pleasant. It definitely is not as pleasant as anybody would like to see, but we do want a lot of input. If anybody has ideas on how it can help them out, it might be able to help others out. We're listening to anything we can. That is why the city decided to move some of this conversation on, to push it down the road so that possibly we could come up with a better answer for everybody here. And, you know, it's, it's, it's our problem to solve at this point. And just, just like Brenda said, we, we want to move forward, we want to take care of this. It's, it might not be the easiest thing, but we'll do the best we can for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
As far as replacing the priority gondola dumpsters, you can go to the prioritywaste.com webpage. It's, there's a contact us and could we put that in the, on the webpage or something so that people know right where to go? That I'm one of those that has a damaged gondola from Republic.
Yeah.
Definitely. I'm sure not a lot, probably a lot of us.
Take the updated information.
Okay, thank you. And then Parks and Rec meeting is this Thursday at 6 o'clock here. We have a welcoming new members. We have, we're setting goals for 2025 and we're working on our Thursdays in our park. So come on, come one and all and tell us what you'd like to see. We're in discussion right now. For residents that have water bills that are higher than, can the city do something about like helping them with an assessment of their water to see if they have a leak as obvious or something?
So with our new system that we have ready to, it's called Neptune, myself and Jen have access into that. We pull up with your account number or your address. You can always look at your history, your, on the newer meters down to our views. We do monitor that quite often, usually daily. We're making phone calls, we're sending letters on people that have had leaks, 15 days, I believe is when we start getting the alert. So we do try to notify people as little as a toilet running, the seal is on that and the toilets are running. We do try to make those phone calls, but if you suspect maybe you have a leak, your meters also have leak detectors on them. If you have questions on that, Don could also probably answer some of that stuff. But yes, we could just call us, we could take a look at your use and identify any sort of leaks.
Okay, and then about the, about the speed, I agree with Monica wholeheartedly about people's speed. And I was wondering, is it possible to have the speed, the speedo detector moved more frequently? Because I think it's been sitting on Tickner near Denise's house for quite some time and could it be moved?
It does need.
Yeah, just more frequently though. I mean, that way, you know, if it's two weeks, that's still better than, you know, maybe you can get everybody in at least a couple of months, you know?
Sounds good.
Yep, and let's see. About, about the, the water pressure and all, if we had a better water pressure with more volume, we would still be, probably have our union block. Unfortunately, we don't. And that pains me a lot because I, like Denise, saw that thing burning and it was like my heart broke. So that was my goal, help every, help it, it never to happen again. And make sure everybody's safe first and foremost. I don't know about anybody here, I have family in California and, and they're north, they're Sacramento area, but that's still horrible. Anyway, I just want to make sure we are safe, number one.
Most things have been said, but we are considering all kinds of options. Obviously, we're going to do another rate analysis on the water. We have monthly billing options, things like that. Would anybody like to see a monthly bill? Show hands, people who'd like to see monthly bill? Because we've considered, that's one of the things we're considering. But, uh, we're, we're trying to figure, okay, thank you. It's, gives us, gives us an idea. It would be a lot of, a lot of extra work for the staff, but if it helps, if it helps, it helps.
With the increased pressure, are we going to be charged more for those waters?
Well, there's water rate increases that are already approved and that's what we're looking at going out. The problem is, is the minute we turn on the Genesee County Water System, our costs are going to double.
Your rates, the rates have already been adjusted for that.
We've already anticipated the system being us connecting to the system. So right now, we just paid a leak connection, say December of this year, whatever. The rate we just went to, if we turned on the system, if you look at our rate analysis, the system would have been $13,000 in the hole, it couldn't pay its bills. The water system is not funded by tax dollars. It's its own separate private business, so to speak. It's the enterprise, what do you call it, enterprise fund, but tax dollars don't go into it. So our water rates are the only thing that pays that bill and the grants and any kind of money we can get. We put our ARPA money fund, you know, somebody said federal funding, we put our ARPA money that should be received, it was $400,000 or so, into that also to try to reduce the debt. And again, we are looking for every possible grant, dollar, anything we can get that's out there that can help us pay for water. The worst thing that we could do is do nothing. You know, people have recommended, you know, have the state come in, you know, ask Flint how, how that works when the state came in. You know, we, we don't want that. That would be one of the worst things we could ever do. I was a proponent of upgrading our system and not going to county water, but that ship has sailed. People have talked about canceling the contract. We've already paid the county millions of dollars, we're not going to get it back. So, and improvements will still have to be made. You know, they asked, the vote was illegal because I was out of town. No, the vote was perfectly legal. Nothing, nothing was done illegally. The council's never tried to hide anything. I'm glad that people are coming to the meetings. You may not like what we do, but at least we get to hear your opinion and, and talk and interact. You can always email me. I respond to everybody. But we appreciate it. We have to work together. We all, we're all paying the same bills. As they said, I've got the, I've got the street assessment for my road. I've got the water bill increase. And Mr. Walker, I'm on a fixed income. I feel the pain. I've been here 20 years and I understand. So please know we are listening and we're trying. We're, as they said, we're, we're playing catch up for a problem that was, been known since 1999. I joined council in 2014. Nobody ever told me we had a problem going on since 1999. We did the water study in 2014, 15 with the SAW grants and we knew we had a water problem. We brought a consultant in to do the rate analysis. They told us to raise the rate 1% a year, we'd be fine. At that point in life, I didn't know what I know now about water. 1% a year, obviously didn't keep up with inflation, didn't do anything for us. That's where we're at, that's how we got to where we are today. None of us like it and we're going to look at everything. You know, the three quarter, the three quarter meters, somebody said it's an option, possibly, but there's going to be a meter cost. And then again, the debt still has to be paid, so we'll have to push that money down the road somewhere to pay it. But if you have questions, reach out. I spent 30 hours of my time this summer going through the Michigan Asset Champion Program through the Treasury Department and the Infrastructure Committee for the state. I can answer, I'll answer any questions, Jen. But thank you all for coming today, I appreciate it.
So I want to start off also by thanking all the residents that have come up tonight. I want to thank the ones that have reached out and called, the ones that have emailed. I understand your pressure. I want to, I do want to say that. Anytime anything hits in our pocketbooks, wallets, it hurts and I, I get it. I have to pay the water bill too. I, I also though do want to take this minute and I want to thank the staff. We have been working very, very hard, pretty much nonstop, between fielding calls, is that making sure that the correct answers are getting out? Likewise with me, doing the same thing. Also looking for the, what can we do? So while I understand tonight that 15 extra days doesn't feel like a lot, it is the first piece, it's, it's, it's a starter piece. It doesn't mean we, we're trying to figure out what else we can do, but that will buy in some people's cases, not all, another painting. And that's the piece that we were looking at when we did it, giving people a little extra time. So while it's not a lot, it's a start, okay? So I, I do want y'all to know I'm not trying to say, oh, take this and, and be happy. No, no, no. It's, but it is a beginning, okay, of something. All right? I also would like to talk real quickly about the water rate analysis. It is going to be super brief. I'm going to hold it up. April 8th, meeting agenda 2024. A lot of what you need to know about your water rates, where your money is going, everything is answered right in this packet, okay? So go and print that out and then go through it. And please feel free to reach out to city staff, reach out to me, reach out to any counselor if you have questions about this. Because this is where there's so much knowledge in here on how we got here right now today, okay? And this was last April's packet from Baker Tilly. I also would like to talk about this meeting. I have had many appearance calls on my side of town and I call that my side of town ID Ralston Ripley. East Ralston being, you know, specifically, it is a huge problem. It has not stopped. It has been a problem since I have been on council. And I have brought up the fact that in the summertime, the kids use my, you know, and adults use my, my yard as a bike path so that they can have a safe place to ride their bicycles. So I am asking, please, let's find a way to do something to halt the speeding because I do not want to see someone get on that end of town. And I'm not trying to catch up guard just addressing an issue.
We've had, when we put the speed sign each time, it's actually been under the speed limit each time. And that was for a considerable long time, Counselor Howden, so, and we do need to move it more often. I, I, I do hear everybody's, what they're saying about that. And we, we are aware of that. We do, we do about 1,400, 1,500 traffic stops a year. Accident rates are almost nil in this, we, we average about 35, 30 accidents and that's an indicator of, of speed. But I understand that, again, and but the, the speed signs have shown that in almost majority of the times we've had it out, that the speeds were under actually the posted speed limit. So, and that, and they were, I mean, one speed, I think we had it out twice or three times on East Ralston and we, it showed that every time, so. But I, I, I get it and I, I understand and I thank you for that.
And yet again, as Mike said, I want to thank everybody for coming. Please feel free, if you did not have your question to answer tonight, to reach out and we will, any one of us will attempt to answer your questions. But thank you so much. So wonderful night. And we're not, we're not done, we're not done, we're not, we have to pay the bills.
Yeah, we have to pay the bills. Okay.
We are still going. If y'all want to leave, go ahead, we have to pay the bills and then we're, we'll be done.
Yes. Oh, well, give us just a minute, we have to finish. Give us just a minute. Almost done.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we pay our financial bills.
I'll second it. Denise?
But is it over or are they going to keep going?
Still recording.
Oh, I got it.
Still recording?
Yes.
Simons?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
We good? Okay.
Can I adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
Four.